Are you good to go, Robert?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Please rise. This January 16th, 2025 meeting of the Dublin City Council is called to order. I'd ask for Ms. Jaclyn Jodan Wright to provide our invocation for us this morning. Please remain standing for the pledge to the flag. Ms. Wright? Just give us a prayer.
Father God, in the name of Jesus, I thank you for a beautiful day. I thank you for allowing me to pray. I thank you for all the families that are represented in this auditorium today. God, let us understand that we are under one umbrella, the Lawrence County, and that we as Dublin citizens are a part of that county. Regardless of any controversies, you are in control. Jesus, you are the reason for the season, so let's have a great meeting without any bickering, fighting, arguing, and start the new year off right. Strive for 2025. Just asking in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, welcome everyone to this noon meeting of the Dublin City Council. Thank you for the invocation, Ms. Wright. We are going to begin our meeting with a special presentation, and for that, I will turn it over to our city manager, Josh Powell.
If we could ask Matthew Slaughter to step forward, please, and I think Mayor Proten, Councilwoman Godfrey is going to help us out.
Colby.
Hi, friend. I'm sorry, Colby. I'm looking at Colby and thinking, yep. They're one and the same. They're like twins. Please get a good picture because his wife scolded me last time. I'll ask you to please join me in congratulating Matthew Slaughter, who is our 2024 Employee of the Year for the city of Dublin. Matt Slaughter began his employment with the city of Dublin on January 21st, 2011, after working for a local private electrical contractor gaining experience in electrical and construction activities. He started working for the gas department as an equipment operator and was promoted to crew leader before taking a position in the engineering department in April of 2017. The experience and knowledge he gained about the city's natural gas system was a great fit for his new responsibilities in engineering. He also became the primary single maintenance person who is on call evenings and weekends to respond to any traffic signal issues that arises. And here recently, that's been a lot, right? Matt is very dedicated to all of his duties. His foundation in the gas department and working on signals prior to his employment with the city have made him a great addition to the team. He has never turned away from taking on the responsibilities in the areas of project management, water, sewer, storm, transportation, and many other responsibilities that engineering oversees. He has a great attitude and never has been one to say, that's not my job. If another department is in need of assistance, he is willing to help and serve to the best of his ability. He's very loyal to the city and its employees, and he works every day to make sure he is doing his part to leave it better than he found it. Matt is a shining example of an employee who deserves recognition for doing his job every day and doing it well. Congratulations, Matt.
Congratulations on that honor. Appreciate all that you do for the city of Dublin. See you all around town all the time, working hard. Appreciate all of that. We have some special guests with us today. Ms. Holliday, do you mind introducing our special guests?
Thank you, council. My name is Teresa Holliday, and we're here with the Spirit Program. We're through CSB of Middle Georgia, a program that serves the intellectual disability that are high function. We do group therapy and group sessions throughout the day, so we just wanted to come today and see how you all operate. They wanted to see how a city council meeting is performed. One of the one things that they talked about was the fact of having a voice and knowing that you all invite them to be able to come and have a voice in the decisions that you make, so that's why we're here today.
Thank you, Ms. Holliday, and we welcome the Spirit Program to our city council meeting. Thank you for being here. We'll now move to our regular agenda items. The first item on our agenda is approval of our January 2nd, 2025 city council meeting minutes. You have those meeting minutes in your packet. Are there any questions or corrections regarding it?
Make a motion to approve the minutes.
We have a motion from Councilman Smith with a second from Councilman Jones to approve the meeting minutes. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
If any opposed, say nay. All right, the ayes have it. We'll now move to approval of bills over $15,000. Those bills are in your packet. Are there any questions for staff regarding the bills? If not, do we have a motion?
Make a motion to pay the bills.
Second.
We have a motion from Councilman Griggs with a second from Councilman Godfrey to pay the bills. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. We'll now move to item number three, approval of purchases over $15,000. Mr. Powell, is it correct we have no purchases over $15,000 for this meeting?
That is correct.
All right, so we'll now move to item number four on the agenda, which is a resolution to award a contract for disaster recovery services. Mr. Powell?
This is Resolution 2503, a resolution by the mayor and council of the city of Dublin, Georgia, authorizing the city manager to negotiate a contract for disaster recovery and FEMA public assistance with Goodwin Mills and Kaywood to authorize the mayor and city clerk to execute the same, set an effective date, and for other lawful purposes. We solicited proposals from different firms providing disaster recovery assistance for the city of Dublin, both for Hurricane Helene specifically and for future disasters. And so, we received a number of proposals from different companies, and a committee of staff members reviewed those and has recommended that we use Goodwin Mills and Kaywood for that, both for Hurricane Helene and for future disasters. This is, one, we've already engaged Goodwin Mills and Kaywood for Hurricane Helene on an emergency basis, but had to follow the normal, we were able to do that on an emergency basis, but then had to follow the normal procurement rules to get their services. And so, it was determined that they were the best qualified to continue that for Hurricane Helene. Also, we're able to use that same procurement to go ahead and have a company or a firm on hand in case we ever need them for a future disaster. This will, this is a, this will be both for a Hurricane Helene contract and for a five-year contract for Goodwin Mills and Kaywood to be on hand in case we need them in the future. Staff does recommend that you approve this resolution, and so we can enter into those agreements.
Now, the cost annually, does it as needed?
It's only as needed.
As needed, okay.
Any other questions for staff regarding this contract? I know there's a copy of it and some of the materials in our packet that related to how the request for qualifications was sent out. Any other information that council members need? All right, if not, do we have a motion?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
All right, we have a motion to approve from Councilman Mascara with a second from Councilman Brown. Any discussion on the motion? No discussion. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
If any are opposed, nay. The ayes have it. We'll now move to item number five, which is a resolution approving a, it's a gas authority agreement for renewable natural gas. Mr. Powell?
This is Resolution 2504, a resolution approving the execution and delivery of an agreement with, that's not right, Green Gas, G.G. Lawrence LLC, and the Municipal Gas Authority of Georgia for the installation of facilities. Give me just one second, please. Sorry about that.
All right, so he's just checking to make sure that we have the right contract information. If you need a second, I can move to board appointments and come back.
I've got it right here. Should be, what's on the screen is not correct, but it should be a resolution approving the execution and delivery of an agreement with G.G. USA Dublin LLC and the Municipal Gas Authority of Georgia for the installation of facilities and interconnection to the city's gas system and the sale and purchase of renewable natural gas, and to authorize other agreements to affect the project and for other lawful purposes. That's very vague, so let me explain. DARPRO, the dog food manufacturer over in east Dublin, is a natural gas customer of the city's, and their wastewater, this company, G.G. USA, which is Green Gas is their name, that's what G.G. stands for, can take that waste and convert it into renewable natural gas. And they would like to do that on that, on that site. They're building a facility there that will execute that process. And they will, what the contract will do is, one, allow them to connect into our system to get the gas into the pipeline nationwide, and they will be selling the environmental attributes from that gas that are credits that different companies can use to help them as far as, as far as the environmental attributes. They will sell those to companies, and then they will sell the gas authority, the actual gas, who will then in turn sell it to us to use in our system. And DARPRO will be the customer that receives this gas. So, it's adding gas to our system, it's adding to our capacity. It saves us costs for gas because we're not paying Southern Natural, some of the charges that we normally would for gas that comes across the national pipeline. And also, there's a fee that they will pay us based on the MMBTUs that they inject into our system, which is going to be 85 cents per MMBTU. And staff has reviewed this thoroughly, the staff attorney has reviewed it, engineering director has reviewed it, and we've been working on this contract now for, it's been, I think, over a year. And the, the gas authority has also reviewed it. This is very similar to what's happening at West Rock that we've done a couple of years back with CRNG, except they're not using cow patties, they're using the discharge from the DARPRO plant. So, this is, and the amount of gas, I should say, that they're going to be injecting in the system is relatively small, but every little bit helps, so we think it's a really good project and a neat way for the Dublin natural gas system to be a part of an RNG project. So, staff recommends that you approve the resolution. There will be a contract with Green Gas USA Dublin LLC, the gas authority, and then there will also be a separate agreement, a letter agreement that we'll have with the gas authority about the purchase of the gas.
Okay. You know, just from, one perspective on this is that there's a lot of talk about natural gas and its environmental impacts on that, and I think it's great that our city is moving into using renewable natural gas sources that are local. You know, right now, the city brings in gas through a pipeline, that gas comes from gas fields in Alabama or Texas. We have to pay for it to come down that pipeline, but if we can use the gas produced by dairy farms or the gas produced by, you know, the dog food manufacturer, we can take that gas that's produced locally, it's renewable, it's not coming out of the ground, you don't have heavy machinery to get it out of the ground, and then you can inject it directly into the gas system, sell it to the gas customer, and we can still make the same amount of money on it. That's, that's a win for everybody. So, I'm glad that, I know you guys have worked hard to come up with these creative contracts, and I think this is another step in a good direction to make sure that we have lots of different ways to get gas into our gas system. So, are any?
Quick question. Can you explain quality control measures as well as termination of the contract if needed?
So, it is important that the gas is to pipeline quality, and there's measurement instruments in there that constantly test that, and is, at every any time, is automatic. You know, during the night, if it picks up that the gas being delivered to us is not up to pipeline quality, a valve will close, and no more gas will flow until, you know, it's determined what the problem is. So, that's a safeguard on our part that we're not going to get any bad gas into our system.
Good.
Okay. Any other questions?
Do we need to make an amendment to the agenda because the name was wrong?
I think it's actually correct on our.
It's correct on our.
It's what was printed in my packet right here as well. That's what it is.
All right. So, any other questions? All right, if there are no other questions, do we have a motion?
Make a motion for approval.
Second.
We have a motion to approve from Councilman Griggs, a second, was that Councilman Godfrey?
That was.
Councilman Brown. So, that's a motion from Griggs, a second from Brown. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any are opposed, please say nay. All right, the ayes have it. That takes us to board appointments, and I have a recommendation for council for appointments to the Black History Banner Committee. I recommend appointment to this committee of Benny Jones, Art Tiffany Stanley, Scott Thompson, Carrie Smith, and Valaya Burke, and also would request that, that our city manager appoint a staff member to be liaison to this committee. Do we have any comments on those that recommended board appointment? All right, if not, do we have a motion to accept the board appointments?
So, most.
Second.
All right, so we have a motion to accept from Councilman Jones and a second from Councilman Smith. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. I want to say thank you to the citizens that are willing to come to those meetings and participate in that process. It takes citizens being involved to make this town work, and I'm glad that we've always had a lot of people who are willing to volunteer.
Would you be kind enough to say those names again?
Sure.
Mr. Benny Jones.
Art Tiffany Stanley.
Tiffany.
Scott Thompson.
Got it.
Carrie Smith.
Okay.
And Valaya Burke.
Thank you.
Okay. All right. That closes our regular items, and is now time for citizens' comments. If there are any citizens who would like to make comments this afternoon, the mic is open.
Hey, y'all.
Hello.
My name is John Hall, and I have been doing some research on the Carnegie and its usage. I met with Glenda Berry just a couple of days ago and went over a few things. I think she's done a great job and is trying to promote it and have events and such. But I know I only have three minutes, so let me go. Dublin does not have a museum right now. Okay, y'all all know the story about what happened at the museum and such like that. I think the Carnegie should be used as a museum. In discussing the usage of the Carnegie, I was made aware that during the week, it's empty. It's used for various functions and usually on the weekends that it is used for events, and people pay for that, and I think that's great. But the Carnegie was originally brought here as a library, and the purpose of a li, the purpose of a library is to show history, one of the purposes. In driving to Florida many times, going through Douglas, Georgia, one thing that struck me was a sign that said museum, okay? Dublin is a fairly big town, 16,000 people, and there's no museum. There's nowhere to display history. One item that I wanted to bring up is a part of this, is previously, all the previous mayors of Dublin were portraits. They're on the wall. My understanding is they are now in a closet, being stored. I would like to see the mayor's pictures put in the Carnegie as a part of history. So, I just want the council to think about this. I know that nothing can be done right now, but I think going forward, there needs to be something done. And I'm not talking about putting artifacts in the Carnegie. I'm talking about, if you've ever been to small towns or even bigger towns, you walk in and there'll be these large placards, whatever you want to call them, that detail the city's history. If you've been to Savannah, you walk around River Street, they have these information boards that talk about the history. I'm a big history fan, obviously. I own the oldest house in Dublin built on its original foundation. But I just think that Dublin needs to step up to the plate and have a museum of some sorts out of the Carnegie. I know it's a dual, it could be a dual-purpose building, but I think it's important for the image of Dublin and for people who are coming to town, you know, where can I see history? Well, right now, there's nowhere to go. So, anyway, I'd just like the mayor and council to think about this and, moving forward, do something to where the Carnegie can be used as a museum. Thank you.
All right, thank you for those comments. Always appreciate ideas from citizens. Any other comments this afternoon, Ms. Holliday?
I'm going to come up first to kind of set the tone and example for them. I just want to thank you all for allowing the community to have a voice in regards to the education issue that we have here in the city of Dublin. But I want to elaborate on it, but I do want to thank you all for allowing the city and county to be able to have a voice and an opinion. Having a voice in our community is a must and it is because it gives everybody a chance to participate in that decision. And my reason for bringing that up and starting that off is just the reason that we're here. We talked, discussed on two topics this past week on transportation and public awareness and having a voice in the community. So, I just want to come up today and say, transportation, you know, is an issue here. We do have what's our taxi cabs and the transportation that runs through Medicaid, but I would love to see the city of Dublin and county, Lawrence County area, look into some more type of transportation because when you're dealing with our intellectual disability as well as our elders and youth for that matter, when we've got single parents that don't have transportation to get to and from. Yes, Dublin is a small city, but we're growing, and things are getting farther and farther away as well as prices are going up. So, I just would love for you all to kind of elaborate and think about getting us some public transportation here that serves the purpose of them being able to get to the doctor's appointments and things like that besides our taxi cabs because things are getting expensive, so it's kind of hard to kind of pay for those trips to and from on a fixed income, even when it's intellectual disability as well as elders. So, I just want to set the tone for that and allow them to see what they need to do to come up.
Okay, great.
Thank you.
Thank you. So, is there, is anybody going to be speaking? Okay.
Mayor, Council, on behalf of the Spirit Program, we picture yard left, you're the gems. That's all I can say.
All right, thank you. I know I've seen you guys there before, so glad that you're able to use those. Is there anyone else who would like to make a comment?
I would.
Okay.
Good afternoon.
Hello, everybody.
On behalf of myself, a senior citizen, age 66, and a disabled person, today I decided to ride in on my scooter, and I've made some observations that sometimes there's seniors who are disabled in the city of Dublin and in other cities, not just here in the county. Some of the buildings, some of the restaurants, some of, some of the places aren't handicap accessible. I have this scooter. Luckily for me, I just opened a venue, and I won't discuss that part, but I cannot afford a truck when my car is not assess, cannot support the weight of the scooter or the lift. So, I decided to use my new building that I'm leasing to keep my scooter in, and it happens to be across the street from City Hall. So, today will be my first day riding around on the scooter just to see if I can get into piggly wiggly, or, I'm not going to try downtown just yet because I don't have this, this flag that tells you that I'm a handicapped person on the scooter, and I, I don't want to get arrested by Chief Moon. But anyway, that's my comment that I hope that this year be a better year for the citizens of Dublin and that everyone do not start all this bickering and fussing and fighting because we are citizens and we are children of God. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Ms. Wright. All right, is there anyone else who would like, like to make a comment this afternoon? All right, thank you for those comments. Always glad to have everyone here. At this time, we'll ask for any comments from Blake Daniels, our chief financial officer and treasurer. Any comments? I will say this, Mr. Daniels, I always appreciate your financial reports. At our pre-council meeting, we went through the audit that was performed on the city, and I think that we're going to have somebody come and give a full report at our next meeting, but the finances of the city look to be in excellent condition. We actually added to our, our general fund and had some very positive results from last year, especially as compared to what was budgeted, and appreciate the way that you manage our city's finances.
Thank you.
All right. And our city clerk, Ms. Browning, any comments? All right, thank you. And, Sarah, all right, we'll start with you, Mr. Brown.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to thank everybody for being here. I congratulate Matthew Slaughter on being named Employee of the Year. We always appreciate dialogue from the citizens. I appreciate your, your comments. And Ms. Teresa, thank you for bringing your folks with you today, and we appreciate their input today as well. Everybody have, have a great day.
Thank you, Councilman Brown. Councilman Jones?
Thank you, Mayor. I thank everyone for coming out. Congratulations, Mr. Slaughter, and what all our city employees do, all the hard work they've done, especially the past few months with the storm coming through, they've been working overtime and extra hours, extra hard to clean up the city, so we thank you for all that you continue to do. As a way of announcement, tomorrow, if you are a veteran, I know a veteran that is trying to get their disability started or need an increase and gotten rejected, tomorrow at the American Legion on Moore Station Road from 10 to 2, we will have representative that doing, that's doing, that are doing claims on site. They're doing them on site from 10 to 2, so they can come and get that deed there. We want many veterans to come out that, that need it. They bring people from across the state to help out with these claims and get them did. So, it's, if you know a veteran or you are a veteran and you're trying to get an increase or trying to get your claim started, this is where you come, bring all your medical work, everything you got. If you already registered with the VA, they can go in and do it through the VA. They already got you in there, so just come on out, bring your information and talk to them, and they will help you get your claim started and file a claim for you. So, that's by way of announcement this weekend, as we get ready to embark upon a holiday, a birthday, Dr. King's birthday, let's not forget what he's still for, still for unity. We might not all agree, but that don't mean we got to fall out because we disagree. Our things don't happen the way we want it to happen, or something happened. The Bible says, if you got an argument with your brother, go to your brother and talk to them. They may not even know that you, why you upset with them, but let's talk and just communication. I often say that I communicate to educate, so let's try to communicate with each other. Let's do better. Unity is what we should be striving for, and it seems like that when we have natural disasters or things happen, we come together as a community, as a country, we come together. But it seems that over will, we go right back to doing what we're doing, bickering and all this right here, and it shouldn't be like that. We should be coming together. We're our neighbors, especially here in Dublin. We know each other, grew up with each other. We can agree to disagree and keep on moving, you know? So, let's just think about that as we come upon this holiday season that we're coming on Dr. King, not just that, but all year long, let's just think about it. You know what? My mother always taught me that God is not going to ask you how that person treated you, but how you treated them. So, I often try to keep that. So, when we're dealing with each other, let's always try to remember that. You're not going, yeah, you may feel like that you're right and all this, but sometimes you got to say, okay, I'm just going to forgive and go on. So, let's think about that, and we treat each other, I ain't going to say as we want to be treated, but treat each other better than what we want to be treated. We know, and I say that because, you know, we say as we want to be treated. It's something that I can rub off my shoulder and be careless about, but it may hurt a few of you or something, but just let me know so I know how to react, and we can go from there. So, let's get better, and that's for everybody, council members, school board members, citizens, you know, friends, whatever it is, family. We all fall out, but let's not, let's, let's make this year better. 25, 2025, let's do better, and as a community. So, let's strive to be better, so that we have a parade this weekend. I know it's going to be raining, but you know what? I look at it in the rain and the weather, they marched in the rain, they marched in bad weather, cold weather, for rights, so for us to have these rights. So, let's not find a robbery to come out, and let's support. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Councilman Jones. Councilman Godfrey?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd just like to thank everyone for coming out. Thank you, Ms. Jodan, for the prayer. It was great. Ms. Teresa Holliday, thank you for bringing your clients, and I hope you all will come again. We love seeing your faces, so come again. You're welcome at any time. Thank the council for having the council meetings in the daytime. This is really good for some people, so I'm grateful for that, and you all have a great weekend. Don't forget the tree giveaway this Saturday from 9 to 2 at Stubbs Park. You could get anywhere from one to four trees, three trees. So, you could ride by, Ms. Jodan. I know you like trees. You could ride by and look at the trees we have available and make your choice, and get you some trees on Saturday, and come to the parade on Saturday. Look forward to seeing you all there, and have a great weekend.
All right, great. Thank you for those comments. Councilman Powell?
Oh, and Matthew, congratulations.
Yes.
I'm, I'm starting with that as well. Congratulations, Mr. Slaughter. We're so thankful for your services to the city, and it is amazing to see how quickly the city has been able to clean up after the hurricane. We're so grateful to our staff for. We're so grateful to our staff for helping organize that. I see so many of our workers or sanitation workers out there with, in the cold, with their gloves and their hats on, still working to keep our streets clean and safe, so we're so thankful for that. Excited about the renewable natural gas innovations and thankful for our guests today, those who spoke on history. I've actually had some conversations with Ms. Beverly Brown at our local library. We have some very large glass cases in the foyer there at the library, and those are available for public use. You just, so any type of historical memorabilia can be displayed there at the library. So I encourage our citizens to, you know, to get engaged with their history and find ways to display and share that with others. I'm so excited to see the Spirit Group. I've come out several times and I've danced with you, dance parties, and we've had hat contests, and we've had our firefighters and our police officers and our wonderful puppy dog mascot there from the police department. You remember that? Just really enjoyed the time that I've had with you, looking forward to additional activities this year. So thankful for Ms. Teresa Holiday's work and for bringing you here today to share that with us. And thankful for Ms. Glenda Berry being here today, too. I'm so excited about the Eagles concert Friday night. I'll be there. And Steel Magnolias is coming up with our very own Renee Cook. And so get your tickets now. Very excited about all the wonderful things coming up in the city of Dublin and thankful to be able to celebrate the holiday on Monday with our citizens as well. Thank you so much.
All right, thank you for those comments, and that'll take us to Councilman Mascara.
I want to echo what Councilman Brown said. Also, I want to just point out, I love to see Teresa here. She is a gift of serving that is unparalleled, unparalleled by a lot of people. And I know that she's always doing it for the right reasons. It makes me proud to see that, and I'm proud to see you guys here learning about your local government. And I just thank you all for being here to support us. Matthew, I disagree with everything they said. I'm teasing. We've been in the funk together a couple of times, and I appreciate everything that you do for the city. I've worked hand in hand with you several times, and you've got me out of some tight spots, and I appreciate everything you do. JDub, thank you for always coming and giving us your good word. I just, that's your new name.
JDub.
You're like the new city council mascot if you need.
We're gonna get shirts made.
We're gonna get you a shirt made with JDub.
I do want to put Ms. Glenda on the spot because I've gotten a lot of calls. Ms. Glenda, can you come up and just give us a quick update on the parking downtown, please?
Yes, I was gonna ask that, but I didn't know if I could.
Is that okay, Mayor?
That's fine.
Yeah.
I've gotten a ton of calls, and I just.
Sure, I'll be quick. Let me start by saying that the great thing about the media is it's a wonderful way to get information out. Sometimes information can go out that's not completely accurate. So with our downtown parking, a year ago, we designated twenty parking spaces in the lot behind Dino's and Saltwater and now those on Madison that were gonna be designated as premier parking spots. That was done as an opportunity to try to accommodate restaurant patrons who were coming to have lunch. It's Monday through Friday, nine to five. Because people tend to not necessarily follow directions, what we saw is that people were continuing to park there all day long, which was causing frustration for the restaurants. So our DDA board had a conversation that there needed to be some consequence, there needed to be some accountability. So we discussed beginning some sort of towing for people that were staying parked there all day long. What was communicated recently was it sounded as if we were initiating towing throughout all of downtown Dublin. And sometimes headers are drafted to be provocative, and so in this case, people were responding to not the complete story. What we're talking about is twenty parking spaces that are in the DDA lot, again, behind those three restaurants. We're trying to be very careful and thoughtful in terms of how we would manage towing, what that would look like, how we would monitor it, adding a security camera so we would have some way to really track for people what parking looks like. But that's really it. I think the biggest takeaway is that people need to understand it's twenty parking spaces.
Yes. And to that point, I had to explain to somebody that that's your property. That belongs to.
That is correct. It belongs to the Downtown Development Authority.
And not to the city of Dublin.
That is correct.
That it is essentially private property, and you can choose to manage your parking the way you'd like.
That is correct.
Are the mark, are the twenty spaces gonna be marked?
They are, there are.
They're already marked.
With a sign or with on?
Correct. It has two-hour parking, it's two-hour parking.
Sometimes we have the signs unless somebody hits.
Well, yes, that is true. Recently, we had someone hit the sign. That's the second time that's happened, so that's been removed for safety and it's being replaced. But yes, it is clear.
So it's gonna be, I guess the police is gonna be kind of, how would you know that? I guess it's gonna be, yeah, how you gonna know?
We have, not to make it sound like in the downtown office, it's like Mission Control, but it sort of is. We have a screen where we have cameras placed at the market, behind the theater. There'll be cameras that will now be at that parking lot, which really we should have anyway because we do own that property and we really need to manage it. So throughout the hours, we have an opportunity to look at our screen so we can keep up with what the parking lot looks like, and that's how it will be monitored.
And it is, just from being down there, it is, and I don't think the pub- this is not something that they really talked about in the article, it is dramatically affecting the businesses.
Absolutely.
And we've got to do everything to be a business-rich environment downtown. And in Dublin in general, and whatever we can do to help.
We certainly want to be proactive and positive in support of our, especially our restaurants that have a finite period of time, as you well know, with lunch crowds. So it was done as a way to be positive and not punitive. But I think the biggest thing is we want people, the citizens, to understand we are not talking about a wave of doing this. It really is twenty isolated spots.
So could it be, I'm just asking for, I know you got, all the restaurants you named is on one, that one particular street, but you have Madison, what is it, Minute Grill, Jack, well, Jack's gonna be covered by what's gonna be on the bright side of that. But the other side, we're gonna look at a couple of them on that side down there. I'm just asking for. Yeah, well, Miller's.
So you know, you know the horseshoe, it's on Madison behind.
I understand, I see, I see, I said, are we gonna add more for the other, for the rest of the, yeah, to cover all the downtown?
There are no current plans to do that. One of the other things we're gonna try to incorporate is a Park With Your Heart campaign to really encourage people to look at all the available parking in downtown. We want to make our downtown a place that's for our residents and our visitors, and we really want to encourage people to start to consider, you know, walking a little bit farther, getting a little bit more exercise. Again, it promotes southern hospitality, and it certainly also promotes good health.
Well, the reason why I ask that, because I know the other side, the other side is not covered. I mean, it's really the, how can I put this? The workers that work at the courthouse tend to take up parking spots that, and stay there all day, and you have those businesses that are affected also, and the courthouse. If I'm coming to, if a person's coming to court, they may have to park way over here in a parking spot that may be a two hour because that's the only one that's left because I can't park nowhere else. And then I get punished if my court is longer than that because of the fact that I didn't have no other place to park. You see where I'm? See where I'm?
I do. And I would say that as long as there have been downtown's parking has always been an issue. I was reading a novel that was written back in the eighties, and one of the comments was a sheriff talking about the parking in a downtown. So this is something that has been around a long time. We may not be able to have a perfect solution, but we are trying to find something that will help the citizens.
All right, well, thank you for coming up just on a impromptu, without scheduling.
Thank you.
Now, that was part of Rich's comments section. Do you have anything else?
I've got my three minutes.
Record for the day.
All right. So are you, anything else, Councilman Mascara?
Just, and John, will you, I like your idea with the mayor's portraits. Will you link that up with Glenda? Because that might be something awesome to do there. It might be a good use.
All right, all right, Councilman Smith?
I'll just echo what everybody said. I think every councilman went over their ten minutes today, so I'm not gonna add to it. But I do want to ask Josh and Matthew, can y'all get us an update on Oak County Gym?
Uh, yeah. Matthew, you want to speak about where we are?
Do you mind coming up here just so they can get you?
See, there's a lot of good progress going on in Oak County Gym right now. Most of them most complete. There's electrical work going on, plumbing work going on, HVAC are the main things happening. The floor has been removed, so it's just a concrete bottom where the gym floor was now. But so far, everything's on schedule, and we're making good progress with it.
What's the estimated time of completion? You got a month yet?
Is it? It's in August. August, yeah.
So there's gonna be new floor?
New gym floor. And new floors throughout as well.
New floors throughout, new HVAC.
New HVAC.
New electrical, new plumbing.
Yes.
Pretty much new everything.
Yeah, it's really down to the shell. I mean, we're at the bones, and we're putting all the muscles and skin back on it.
Okay.
Okay, that's all I have. I ain't gonna talk for ten minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Bradshaw. Thank you, Councilman Smith. Anything else, Councilman Smith?
No, that's it.
Okay, Councilman Griggs?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to thank everybody for coming. Echo pretty much what everybody else has said, and congratulations, Matthew. And I think we're gonna be getting some cool weather next week, so be prepared for that.
Cold weather.
And y'all have a great week.
All right, thank you for that. City manager, Mr. Powell?
The front of City Hall will be closed off starting on Monday, and so the entrance to the building is gonna be on the side door on the side or in the, on the back of the building. So we're, city employees are gonna be reserving parking spaces for the public to use along those sides of the building. We'll be parking a little further off in the, in the, parking in the pines is what I called it. And that's gonna start Monday and will last for, I believe, four to six weeks, or it might have been six to eight weeks, for them to do the front facade work. The Martin Luther King Junior Parade is Saturday, and I've been told that's gonna be rain or shine, and it looks like it's gonna be rain, and we're gonna press on no matter what. And so that's gonna start at twelve. The parade will start at twelve.
Eleven.
Eleven.
I'm sorry, the parade's at eleven, and yes, supposed to conclude at twelve. And lineup is gonna start at ten-thirty. The roads will start closing down at ten. Also, as was mentioned earlier, the tree giveaway that we're doing and sponsoring from the city, we got a grant for that, a relief grant. We'll be giving away some really nice trees at Stubbs Gym or Stubbs Park on Saturday also from nine to two. And based on the weather, they will be pre-watered, so come and get a tree. I think that's all I have.
I have a question.
All right.
I reached out to GDOT regarding the roads, the rightways where the trees have fallen. No one could tell me if they're still picking up for our city. Do you know? Because on Veterans Boulevard and nineteen.
So there's a few areas I think that it'd be good to update the public on. One is the parks and whether or not the Army Corps of Engineers is gonna be, because we know we lost a huge number of large trees at Stubbs Park and Mayor's Park. And then also the rightways and the major rightways, and then any in-town cleanup.
Yeah, so as far as the GDOT and their right-of-way cleanup, I don't have an update on that. I will have to inquire about that and figure out what their status is. They've not exactly been very forthcoming with that information. But we will find out and get back to you. As far as where we are with the Army Corps and their cleanup, they have transitioned from the large debris pickup to the leaners and the stomps and that kind of thing, and the smaller debris. And they're clearing out also, I received some calls from some neighborhoods concerned. They're going through and cutting dead limbs that are hanging over the right-of-way that might pose a hazard. So they're doing that all throughout town. I can't give you a location of where they're actually working or what their schedule is on that, but I do know they're going through town and doing that as they encounter it. They are also, right now, was reported this morning on a department head meeting, actively working at Riverview Golf Course and at Stubbs Park. So they are on-site now helping remove that debris. We are gonna be working to see if we can't facilitate the preservation of some of the lengths of wood that are there at Stubbs that might be beneficial for some park project going forward as we do our park renovations. So we're gonna see if we can facilitate that. And did I answer all those questions?
You did. All right. Any other questions for Mr. Powell? All right, any other comments, Mr. Powell?
That's it.
All right, I want to thank everyone for coming this afternoon, and if council members can stay just briefly for a picture with the Spirit Group, then we will now be adjourned. Thank you.